All the toter, toters, toters that are empty, there's all the toters that are born out everywhere on the ground. There's new toters here, there's new toters there. I think everything.
Well, the answer to your question is, Jack.
All the toters, toters that are empty, there's...
The, uh, I drove around town, made a list of what we have, about seven streets that have been missed. We've looked at probably about fifty, sixty customers. And I sent it down to Hippersburg Southampton Township. And we got a call and we were told, don't worry, they're going to be in Newville today, they're going to deliver the remaining toters. And I drove around before I came to the meeting and I didn't see any of the streets that I, unless they're going to come out tonight and do it because of the temperatures that might be, but...
It's all truck picking up toters about an hour ago.
That's a good thing.
They, they were delivering westerns, but it was all the, sorry, all the fallen red toters. So, I mean, that's a nice...
I saw a big truck on Liberty Avenue and they were breaking the tires off on them and putting the truck down. I told them, why are you doing this? I said, America is a great country, but we as Americans are very wasteful. This is an example of waste. What are you doing then? I said, where did they go? They said, they put it in the dump.
Yeah. With a trash can and putting my trash can down.
So I said, but I have some of them. They said, yes. I mean, you want...
So here's, here's a story. What, would you say every three minutes today, Tony's picked up a phone and it's been somebody asking, when are you coming for my toter? When can I get a toter?
I even got a call, I got too many. Like, how can you get two?
Somebody signed up tonight for new toter and actually got one of the old toters. I even went out to look at that and verify it for myself. Couple things. Always be wary of the low bidders.
Remember that five years ago?
We had a contract that we controlled. We hired a contractor, we had a rollout plan, we had everything. And now we went back in with Southampton Township. I'm afraid we've gone from the frying pan to the fire, just by what I've seen here since last Thursday. You've got a bidder who bid on this job, who knew how many connect, how many collections there were going to be in each of his pallets. He knew this in January. So don't you think he also knew how many toters he needed? But yet, when we called Southampton Township, we're told they ran out of toters. How could you run out of toters? You didn't spring up nine hundred new homes since January. So it's, it's poor planning, poor execution in terms of the delivery. The toters under our contract, when we wrote our contract, toter was to be picked up, the very next day, a new toter was to be delivered. So that at most, you had one night of garbage. What you have now is, you've got last week's collection made by Advanced Disposal. You have some people who don't have toters, put their garbage out this week, and you have a holiday weekend coming up where more garbage will be generated than ever before. Not a good situation. And there's no reason for it. There's absolutely no reason, when you look at the fact that this all was put out for bid and the contract was awarded in February to March. There's no reason that we should be experiencing. But all we can do, when we get complaints, and God knows, I was going to say, everything is going fine. See how close she is? She can hit me. I didn't want to say that and anger her, because all day long, that's all she's been doing is answering calls from the department. And there's no reason. There's no reason.
So there's basically nothing we can do?
Yeah. We, we call, we take your complaint, I gave it to Joey, send it in along with how many others. And we're told, well, they're in Newville today. So, other still, a few hours left.
Are they really gonna recycle? Or are they just giving us recycling bin and charging us ten dollars?
Well, under our contract, they were to give us the name of the landfill that they were disposing of, and they were to give us the copy of the license for the recycling facility. So that we have proof that what was in the recycling bin, but now, we have no proof that... We don't know that the garbage and recyclables aren't all ending up in the landfill. All right, well, it's seven oh five, let's, uh, let's get started with the meeting. Mr. Ignite?
That's great. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all your blessings. We know that there are difficulties in any transition, but we pray that good straight and compass straight leads out with the help of the contractor at Southampton. We pray that, going forward, we encourage all those that are taking part in this endeavor to be patient and also to be mindful of others who are having difficulties. So we pray, Heavenly Father, that you be with our meeting tonight, help us as we seek to do the business in the borough. Help us to be wise in our decision making, and we ask that you especially be with those in our midst who are suffering physically or who are having tough economic times. We know, Heavenly Father, that coming out of this pandemic, there are still many issues in our community, and we pray that you help us to meet those. Again, we ask that you be with our first responders and our police, keep them safe, and we ask that you guide us this evening with Jesus' name.
All right, pledge.
What leads us to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation of...
It does more tell a person. All right, roll call.
Mr. Crowe.
Here.
Mrs. Deal.
Here.
Mr. Erickson.
Here.
Mr. Singvitz. Mr. Marius. Mr. Penn.
Here. All right, before you have the meeting minutes, the consent agenda from May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, the regular meeting and the June first public work session. Any questions about those minutes? All right, moving on to approval of bills. Higher Information Group, one hundred fifty-two dollars fifty-one cents. Andaco, three hundred point four dollars and ten cents. Irwin Ignite PC, two thousand seventy-seven dollars and eight cents. Newville Print Shop, one hundred and seventy dollars. Commonwealth PA, five hundred and eighty-six dollars. Sailor's Market, fifty-six dollars sixty-one cents. AD Markman, sixty-eight dollars sixty-two cents. Edmund Fuels, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars forty-eight cents. Martin and Martin, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. JF, JGF Funding, two hundred sixty-nine dollars. Advanced Subject Services, two hundred eighty-six dollars. PA Municipal Code Alliance, five hundred seventeen dollars fifty cents. Newville Print Shop, seventy-four dollars. South, Southland Hughes BC, one hundred and fifty dollars. CIA Crime Intervention Alarm, four hundred twenty-three dollars. Carlisle Chamber, two hundred and sixty dollars. For a total of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety cents from the General Fund bills. Under Highway Eight Bills, PA Perks, two hundred fifty-four dollars fifty cents. CNH Industrial Capital, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. PA Perks, again, for one thousand ninety-five dollars and eighty-five cents. It should be noted that that one has been turned over to the police for restitution. And Sherwin-Williams Company, eighty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents, for a total of two thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixteen cents. Any questions about the bills?
I have one question. The one that was turned over to the police department. Since that's coming out of Highway Eight, if we get that money, we pay, does it go back into Highway Eight? Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, Treasurers Reports. General Fund, thirty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars fifty-nine cents. Rental Checking, by the way, these are all Detective May thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. Rental Fund Checking, one thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars sixteen cents. Street Lighting Account, seven thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars twenty-two cents. Fire Tax, sixty-four thousand seven hundred and five dollars and seventy-three cents. The Expense Accounts, the General Expense Account is six hundred and thirty-three dollars and nineteen cents. Newville Area Events, five thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and eleven cents. Highway Eight Liquid Fuels Checking, forty thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars ten cents. Payroll Checking, seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. The Police Pension Plan, three hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-six cents. Non-Union Pension Plan, uh, non, non-uniform Pension Plan, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars thirty, let's try that again, five hundred and twenty thousand thirty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. The Borough Joint Veteran Council Account, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-three cents. Capital Improvement Fund, one thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars sixty-one cents. Tax Anticipation Line, three hundred and twelve dollars and ten cents. Any questions on the Treasurer Report? You have written reports from the Police Chief, Fire Chief, Mayor, zoning and codes enforcement officers, Street Superintendent, Chief, Plans Operator, and Field Operations in your packets. Any questions on those? All right, need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Second.
Second. Then properly moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Any extensions? Motion carried. All right, on the Verbal Reports. Police Chief, Police Chiefs Report. You're up, Chief.
Police Report for the month of May twenty twenty-one. Calls for service for the month are three hundred and fifty-four. Traffic Enforcement for the month. Citations issued were eighty-eight. Traffic warnings issued were thirty-seven. Um, just another figure there, I've been drawing out the last couple months, twenty-eight of those, eighty-eight citations or commercial vehicle citations. Three parking violations. Trolley vehicle mileage for the month, two thousand five hundred and eighty-seven miles. Warrants outstanding, field three. Any questions on any of those? I have a reminder, National Night Out's coming up. It's not too far off, maybe August third, it's the first Tuesday in August, six o'clock in the mountain. Planning for that's going pretty well. Going to need some help though, making cotton candy and snow cones and that sort of thing. So, hit me up if you're interested. Couple issues that we're having that I could send an email out earlier today. We're having issues with our two thousand thirteen patrol car. Some of the emergency lighting is starting to, uh, to go on it. Their lighting is eight years old. Warranty on that stuff is five years. So that's three years past warranty status. As of right now, there's like four lights, two in front, two in back. They're running at about fifty percent, they're about fifty percent burnout, so at some point here, we're gonna have to replace that lighting. The lighting itself, just by the lights, is about eighty, eighty dollars a light, so three hundred and twenty dollars plus whatever it's gonna take for somebody to rewire those in. Station, we're having a little bit of trouble with our phones right now. We've been having trouble for a couple months. We've been kinda getting around it by changing phone jacks, going from jack to jack to find one that works. Um, I guess we've jumped around enough now that there's only one left that works. So, we're gonna have to get somebody in to go through that because the same jack is the phone jack and then it has the Cat Five, which is the internet on the same plate. So we're gonna need, it's the light to come in and check that out, see why all those outlets aren't certain or don't bad. I did order a new phone today, one of our phones, I think also is bad. It'll be here Thursday, but we're still definitely gonna need...
Somebody come in and check the wiring.
Who does, who does it? Who does it?
Prime Interve, veg alarm, we put our security system in, ran all the wiring, original wiring for the, uh, the internet and the health system.
You'd recommend that, that, Lou?
I think we know where all wires and everything are going since it's late today, today, so I, it's kind of random, tends to be issued today, so I can get a chief to call them on, try to call them in the morning, see what they may be able to take a look at. That's all I have.
Okay, we do have down here two, uh, combustion for the lights and the portion rod, uh, I believe for the tires. We've already approved purchases before.
Well, we did put four new tires on the number one SUV in two thousand eighteen, that's been done.
Right.
And we put two new tires on the two thousand thirteen. Took it down for inspection two days ago, yesterday. And he did pass them for inspection, but he needed two new portion bars, which he had to replace already, and I think they were around a hundred dollars. Um, he mentioned there's a CB boot that's leaking, if it's fixed, he's getting an estimate for that, didn't get that yet. And he mentioned that the one tire's not gonna make it a whole lot longer. Looks like the front end's out of line. I presume it's that pot hole on Fairfield Street that you had fifty times a day. So at some point, we're gonna need to line it up before winter and put two more on that one on the front. Then it'll have a sense of four new tires to wait.
So how many total tires?
That'll be ten, we've done six.
Okay.
And we need two more.
So we don't need to per, we don't need to approve any of the tires, because we, I think we approved three.
And I think we only approved the six. We set for number one and two tires for number two. I'll pull up tack. I'm pretty sure the boss did it, we only approved six.
And then, they, did we, other cars did it leave? Four times?
I thought we could buy with the titty, which we still can for a few months, because it all goes, and all the rest is all, we got each four.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
We gotta replace four times, it's why I have to convert. I had to ask him, obviously, that's how I... And a mechanic told me, that's, that's an known issue with four wheel drive.
When I got, yeah, when I got my car, they told me, they go, you know, it's just a lot of net, but if you have a tire that's bad, and you have to replace it, you have to replace all four of them.
That's only the all-wheel drive, the four-wheel drive?
All-wheel drive.
All-wheel drive. Not all-wheel, if it's, if it's four-wheel drive that you can take in and out, that doesn't fly. But if somebody asks you all-wheel drive, you say, yeah. So, all right. Corner back to Verbal.
Oh, I started.
The expensive one.
We're ready, we're ready to motion to, um, close down streets for, that's August fourth, right? Oh, they're, they're, they're. Fourth is meeting, uh, probably closer than four.
Fourth is the meeting now?
Isn't that, isn't there a meeting for the, uh, public meeting for the, uh, second? Uh, August third is our work session night, and we've always preempted our work session because council members go up and work National Night Out. So we can move it to the fourth. And again, that would be for the recommendation on the new Sunday.
I thought that was advertised, that was.
So on the, on the third, except, we, we are doing...
You wanna come up with, you can be a cotton candy or...
So, no cones?
Snow cone.
Yeah, it's fun, it really is.
Or, no, I, I topped out that, that. Or you could be the demonstration bad guy for the dog. There we go, something like that.
That would attract a crowd, we can really go with some lawyer jokes on this one.
All right, anything else, Chief? All right, very good, thank you. The Fire Chief is not here, but there is correspondence we'll get to later, later. There is a written report in your packet. Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, good, okay. Um, now, first, the, uh, financial report, this, of course, is for the month of May. Traffic fines, two thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars thirty-seven cents. Parking fines, thirty-five. Clerk of Court fines, which is again, uh, the bore share of the money from criminal offenses, eight twenty-nine seventy-five, for a total of thirty-three thousand one hundred and ten dollars and twelve cents. So we've, um, another good month of traffic enforcement. The account balances, Police Department Checking Account, twelve thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy cents. Now, um, it's a pretty decent, pretty healthy balance, however, uh, there's a, a percentage of that, it, that is designated for specific things. One is National Night Out. One is the purchase of Class A dress uniforms for the officers. Those uniforms have been ordered, uh, but have not arrived yet. The Department K nine account, three thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty cents. Usable amount on the debit card, three twenty ninety-one and a hundred and fifty-one dollars in the Auxiliary Police Account. Now, one, one other, um, item. When the department makes a criminal arrest and the chief posts it on Crime Watch, he sends it to me in an email with the link to the Crime Watch page, uh, so I can review it. Chief and I had a discussion about, um, the, the proposition of adding everyone's email addresses to that link. We feel it's, that it's important, you, you can look at the monthly financial report and, and you can see the level of traffic enforcement. We also think it's important for all of you to know what type of other offenses or criminal offenses the officers have to deal with. So, uh, Chief and I will finalize, uh, that plan, but I would, uh, tell you to expect that sometime in the near future, uh, you're gonna see those reports popping up in your email. That, that's all I have.
Any questions for the mayor? All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing for local emergency, emergency management coordinator, uh, Mr. Ignite, Solicitor's Report.
Um, there's a resolution we go with. Act four, um, it's, uh, instructs the police department to not enforce the open drinking ordinance of fifty-eight. And that's for the, for the outdoor concert set for Friday, July thirtieth, from six to eight P M. on West Pickles Brandy Avenue and West Streets. So that's ready for adoption if you feel ready to do so.
Are we discussing that now?
Yeah. And I'd like to discuss also the, uh, maybe link that to the Authorization Advertise Ordinance two thousand twenty-one oh four, um, which would be a permanent, um, suspension of enforcement of the open drinking law. Um, I just wanted to make one comment. I'd rather postpone that till after this first occasion. I believe that Newville citizens will act responsibly, but, um, their problems, I wanna know about it before we pass the ordinance, going with it permanently. So, um, I'd rather see how it first, how it goes, get some input from the police before we work on that next ordinance. So that's, I just wanted to say that, which when the discussion starts. I think you can link the two together.
Well, I thought long and hard about this, and I know that when we first discussed working the other way for this one night, I expressed how I felt, and I still feel that way. When we discussed going for the liquor license, so that, look, putting it on the ballot and that, I wasn't ordered for that either, however, um, you know, I, I didn't voice my opinion then, but I was under the assumption that that was so that if people wanted to open up a brewery, they could do that, if a restaurant came in and we could, they could have wine and beer. But I did not think that it was going to be for a public event on our streets. So that, I mean, so that people could purchase wine, I'm, I'm assuming it's just wine at this point, at a public venue, that first of all, it's a free concert, you know, it's a two-hour concert, and I don't see the need for a winery to come in and sell alcohol for two hours at a concert. It's supposed to be family oriented. I mean, if, if it's a brewery, or if it's a restaurant and you don't wanna partake in it there, you don't have to, you don't have to go. But if you'd like to go to a concert and sit there and not be subject to people sitting around you drinking, that's not very fair to those people. I just don't think that it's necessary to have wine at a two-hour concert. And I don't think, I didn't think that that is what was to happen when we passed this liquor law. So I just think that we all need to think long and hard about a decision that could impact, you know, other public events. And, you know, it'd be, maybe be different if the borough wasn't sponsoring these concerts, what they are. And is that what we want? Do we want people to think, well, you know, the borough is sponsoring this event, so, you know, they must be okay with it? And the other thing is, if we pass the, the ordinance saying that, you know, we can do that other, what's to say, like the car show I'm having? You know, I, I questioned about that, well, what if we wanna have it? Well, I would said, oh, no, because it's at the park. Well, what's the difference between the park and the fountain? You know, what, what is the difference? They're both public property, they're both in the borough.
If I bring my little cooler and have two cans of beer in it for myself, do you want us? Should I worry about getting arrested?
Yeah, it should, because it's an open container.
You can't make an exception for me to have two beers?
No. As of right now, no. Is that correct?
That's correct. Could you make an exception?
That's what they're trying to do, but I don't think it's necessary. You can't go two hours and not have to have a, a beer.
Oh, you're just hypothetical.
Well, I, I know, I know, but, you know, I just, I just feel very strong that we're, we're sending the wrong message. And how is it okay to be at the fountain, but not okay to be at the park?
Well, that cuts two directions.
I mean...
That cuts both directions. You could say, well, we should allow it.
Well, I don't think we should allow it at all. I don't think we should allow it at the park because there's kids there all the time, you know?
Is there precedence in other boroughs in Cumberland County, would we have done this as an exception?
I, I do, personally, I don't know, but we're not talking about other parks, we're talking about Newville.
I understand how you feel, saying the two sides there.
Right, right, right.
I, I'll just say that the, when I walked around the concert at intermission, I'm just talking to some people, there were two, two requests for the next one. One was to have more food trucks, where I did, you know, stop. I said, well, this is the first one. And the very second one was, why can't, why can't, like Longchamp or something like that, you require services? So, I mean, those, those were common requests. And, you know, my, my opinion is, we put it before the people, and made it very clear where they stood, whether we agree with that or not.
Well, but that's not what I'm getting at, Scott. I'm, I'm talking about it being on the street, on, you know, and I'm talking about, are you gonna say, okay, we're gonna have it at, we're, again, we're gonna have it at the fountain? the fountain, but we can't have it at the park? And what about the trailhead, where who's going to control that? I mean, I'm just.
There, there's requests, have to come in, and that's why the second part of that, which I agree, I think we should try it this first time, see how it goes, and then address, address the other issue. But that's where that, that one needs addressing.
Right, right, but I think that, you know, this all needs to be discussed before we even, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I just, me personally.
I mean, the, yes, the public talked, the public decided that it was going to go on the ballot and it passed, but it didn't pass for what we're talking about.
It passed to make Newville not a dry town.
Right, but it didn't pass, I mean, nothing was ever discussed about having alcohol at public venues, like the concerts, okay? It was, as far as I'm concerned, unless I really was out of whack and didn't hear, but it was to have possibly microbreweries and restaurants that would allow the sale of wine and beer. Now, a public concert at the fountain, something at the park, they are not a restaurant or a, unless I'm missing something.
What is your concern?
Right?
What is your concern about that?
What is the concern about it? I just don't think we should have it on the public streets. I don't think that, you know, we should be able to walk down the street with beer or wine, because I just think it's going to lead to other things. Well, first of all, underage people doing it, and, you know, I think our police department has enough work to do other than worrying about that, but maybe you're a favorite, I don't know. So, I just, you know, unless you, now, I'm not going to get into my personal life, but unless you've lived it, you, you probably got.
Let me just tell you, I had an email today from Valerie Copenhever, and Valerie has been working on a beer run, which would be like a five-day race, and there would be alcohol and wine, and she's been discussing this, Jack, at E D A meetings, and she asked me today what was involved in getting permission for that. And I advised her that she would have to contact the Borough Council, because of our open container ordinance, so this would be another event, you would have to grant a variance for, in order to then have alcohol, and it was going to be beer and wine. But it was intended to, you know, gauge the support for microbreweries here in Newville. I think there's a company from Campville that's been looking, and so K was going to act as a sponsor, and Valerie Copenhever is putting it all together, but it's in the very early stages right now.
She's having a person corporate sponsorship to M R I, to medical, but yeah, it's, it's a different issue.
I'm pathetic, if we do this, succeeds, and it's having precedents, leading tourists, leading people to have a little bit of a violent evening.
That would be, definitely.
Personally, I don't see.
I think there are two key points that Joey made that we really should consider, and that is, how do we differentiate between one part of town and, how can we say it's okay? One part of town, and the other. Second, which to me is the bigger point, is do we, since this is a borough-sponsored event, do we want to promote alcohol at that event? It's a little bit to me like the state advertising, careful consumption of alcohol while operating that, it's, it's a, it's a bit of a conundrum. And I think if we're, if we are promoting an event and sponsoring it, and then saying we're ignoring our current laws, the normal books, it raises some questions, but that's, so that, that's the biggest issue, is what she, what she brought up.
And right, right now, with the way things are written, you know, council can say no to, can say no they, you know, if somebody wears that, they can say no to us, as long as we're up front, right in front of them. And Joey, they contacted us.
Yes.
So, it's not like, we, you know, the borough made a lot of searching, because they contacted us and requested, which is the same point I'm making with K, they, they contacted us.
So they're, so they're, so they contacted us to put, put permission to be a vendor at our event, right? But as with you.
And I have, I have another question, okay? Say we pass this resolution, and say we pass the ordinance then, so that means that at National Night Out, we have all those kids, people can openly walk down the street with Is that what we want?
No, it doesn't say that. It doesn't say that at all. Your, this resolution is simply for two hours on.
But, but while I'm getting there, saying it.
Here's the call-up.
Right, right, right.
I, that's why I'm reluctant to, to dive into that one yet, until we wrestle through some of these things, but here's just two thoughts, and I'm not advocating for anything, but just two thoughts for you. One of the nicer concerts that I engine away during summer fair in Carvile is on the Dickinson campus, and it's bluegrass music, and it's bluegrass music, not for one hour or two hours, it's for a lot of hours. It's like, I mean, there's a lightbulb, whatever, but it's, a lot of people come and they go, and, and, and there's alcohol there. I don't think they sell it there, but there's alcohol there, people bring it. But I've never seen any, all the years I've gone there, I've never seen any incidents with the required police, maybe there are, but they have required police intervention. It's a family oriented thing, kids are not drinking, and usually the entire family's there, and, I don't know, right? An event like that, in which you can't even tell that, that there are various containers and stuff, they've got alcohol, or maybe you see a bottle of wine or something, I don't think that's, I've not seen incidents involving it. We need to test this and see whether or not a two-hour concert creates problems. If a two-hour, if we're having problems with a two-hour concert, two-hour concert and alcohol present, then we need to rethink the whole thing, how we do that. So I'm just, I'm just saying, a two-hour concert is a nice test to see if it's, if it works or not. But, but I understand the concerns, which is why I, I don't want to see us dive into the ordinance and can we actually see how it would work in the event. And, and if the answer is, no, we don't want to have any, any alcohol on our streets, only in, only on private property with, with licensed vendors, maybe that's an answer, but I don't think we need to rush into a, open some ordinance until we see how it's going to work on, on a test basis.
Mr. Mayor.
Scott.
How was Mr. Mayor?
Diane, my observation, I was surprised that it passed as well as that bit. I'd like to know how it was first, but living in this community for 50 years, and she's lived there all her life, you have people who want to vote, and yes, they passed them, okay? But there are a lot of people in the community that are very conservative too, and I think that's where they're talking. But, like you said, it passed, so the people are speaking, the ones who are coming out to vote. But I, I think what she is expressing is what our community, a lot of the older people particularly, it's, and we're changing, we are changing, and so, like, this is a big change, and it'll be interesting. I do think what, you know, Mr. Green said, we need to try it, see what's going to happen with that one, but I do think when we do see that, it should really be looked at here for, because they live with the children, you know, that, a lot of these events, you would see that many children, but if you're at the event with the police and, you know, and children, then I think that's where the council could, you know, should be able to say, no, this is a children event, parents, you're there, but it's not just for adults. So that's where judgment has to come in, and, and that's where we have to take it one step at a time. We don't know. This is a big thing for this community, believe me. When people, a lot of people didn't vote, and I talked to them, and they go, oh, come on, like Newville, you know? But we are changing, and we can have to try it. I mean, if they passed it, we have to do something, unless you said the council could decide not to, would you say?
Well, Diane, just so you understand, there are two issues here tonight. One is a resolution that grants permission to not enforce the open container ordinance for a two-hour period of time on a public concert.
Yes.
After that, the ordinance is in effect. At eight oh one, the ordinance would back into effect. The other resolution, that is before the council, merely keeps the open container law in complete check, with the exception that it gives the Borough Council the right to grant permission to venues where alcohol could be consumed. So it's up to the Borough Council what event it would be. I don't see anyone at this table that would vote, that's ridiculous to have it at National Night Out.
Yes, and I will, I see that.
But maybe perhaps a concert, maybe something with a trail, something like that, that's what this is giving the Borough Council, that we don't have to come back and do a resolution each and every time, that the council has the authority to just wait. So it's not abolishing open container, that's an abolish the open container ordinance, it merely gives, first resolution, as Solicitor McKnight said, is to allow it on a trial basis. After that, if it works, the council can do the next ordinance, and even so, with that resolution, the council would have to come back and decide, you know, what event we wish.
The council is charged.
Yes.
Could you, could you, like, maybe open container?
Well, I think the chief is probably better to do that, and I'm sure they don't have it in front of me.
I'm sorry?
I don't have it in front of me.
No, but, uh, just this.
Yes.
You know.
Basically, you can't, you can't be a public travel or an open, open container, or exposed alcohol beverage, so.
When you're not allowed one day.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, you had a comment?
I'll, I'll just further what Marcus said. I think at some, sometime in the foreseeable future, you're going to see Kane's Pizza, you're going to see Jamie Lee's, you're going to have the microbrew across the street, once they all get their licenses. Keep in mind that those places will be open five or six days a week. For us to, for lack of better words, experiment with this, what we're doing with this street concert is probably the least risky opening event that we could have. If you noticed that last Friday's concert, there was a police officer assigned to that event the entire time, and the chief has someone assigned to this event, very unlikely that anyone would get out of hand, even if they wanted to. The winery people, they, they have to have, their servers have to have the same training as regular bartenders have, as, as far as recognizing and refusing to serve intoxicated people. And it's, I, I don't envision it being so crowded that people are going to be able to send somebody else to sneak up to the table and, and get them extra, it just, going to be an officer there, but, once again, this whole program was brought forth, petitions carried by council members, and the community spoke loud and clear, and to suddenly come up with, and, and I respect everybody's opinions, I've known Joey for years, I respect her opinion, but keep in mind, it was the council that promoted this, and we have to give it an opportunity to see if it works. Remember, if it doesn't work, we're in control of that too. So, but I think this upcoming event, it is, is fairly low risk, in fact, really low risk, and, and we'll never know until we let it go forth. Thank you for the time.
Pretty much same as the mayor's, maybe until we try, we're all going to know what's going to happen. And it turned out that we got last Friday night, engaging that on, running it next month, I don't know what concern. At this point, I have three of us being here for that night, because I think that's the biggest draw of the, of the summer, until we try, we don't know. As long as we don't give up the, the ultimate power to say no to other events, I don't see, you know, if we're not abolishing the open container ordinance altogether, I don't see an issue. As long as we keep it controlled to those streets and that event and that time, and people aren't taking the drinks back to their cars and things like that, I really don't think we're going to have a problem, if we really don't know that until we try.
How, how do you know the rules? How do they, now, are we going to advertise these, you know, kind of, kind of sell it there for, for the event?
Of course, if they're going to have this wine wagon there, maybe that would be a good thing, that there is something posted there, to let them know that they're going to be consumed.
Yes.
On the venue.
Right.
And no further, that's it.
I, I'm just wondering for information, you know, I could, somebody, it's a lot of them want to walk past, so, what, what are the rules? And they end up walking back to my house, whether they're going to be in the alley, probably.
Right, that's where it's going to run into a problem.
Really bad to, to get to my house, and nearly a health ward of beer. And.
Sure, that trash can set up at the ends of all those streets and.
Right, they don't know the law.
The van, the van, and the house.
Okay, very good, because how could, people have to know what the law is, and what is expected of them, right, you have your van, that's a great.
We could also bring in a couple of auxiliaries and, and place at the end of each street, and when people are leaving, remind people, that's got to go in the can, that's got to go in the can, before they head down the streets or the car, so everybody gets the idea.
Some people, two hours, right?
Right.
Two hours. I'm drunk, could somebody get him two hours?
Well, you'd be surprised.
People who want to get drunk will find a way to do.
They have a free game, they go up there.
I can guarantee you.
I can guarantee you, I can guarantee you that there were people at the concert going Friday night, who had alcohol and, good hands, if, we just didn't. Some people knew about it, but, you know.
They overlooked it.
Yeah, and, you know, and again, there was, we didn't have any issues.
The bluegrass concerts are great. This could be done in a very jovial, training, uh, responsible manner.
The people who have these licenses to go to specific events, they're fairly well-trained, and if they, if there are violations of their requirements from the LCB, they're gonna lose their licenses. They're pretty diligent about making sure people aren't over served. I do believe South Newton Township, at their last fair, had a tent in which there was a winery. So, you know, you had to be an adult to be able to do that, that sort of thing. I think they had that, and.
I, I remember they, I don't remember seeing it, but they did have.
And again, it, it's, it's, it's not meant to be, um, it's not like German Oktoberfest, where everybody's. I've been to that, and that's, that's the experience, but no, that's not what this is meant to be. Do you feel any further discussions needed? All right, so, I'm assuming by hearing the discussion, you want to handle these separately, the ordinance and the resolution. Is that correct? So we need a motion for, uh, Resolution 2021-07. Which provides the, um, provides the, uh, suspension of the open container law for the time, the time and the area of the, of the event. Move the motion. The move is in second.
Second.
The move is in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no?
No.
Any extensions? Motion carries. Do you just want to table?
How long do we table the, uh, ordinance? Till after this again?
I, yeah.
So you have a motion to table ordinance number 58. Any changes to ordinance number 58, we'll second. It's in second, not any other discussion?
I don't see how we can go from one two-hour event to passing that ordinance. Because I don't see how one two-hour event is gonna give us the answers we need to.
And Marcus, tell me if I'm wrong here, and this is just me asking a question. The only thing that changes in this ordinance is that Borough Council has given authority to grant permission on a case-by-case basis.
Yep, without doing a resolution.
Without, what's that?
Without going formal resolution.
Correct. So if somebody comes forward with a request, council has to approve it. So the open container law continues all the time, minus any. I understand.
And I'm sorry that I'm making a big deal out of this, maybe I shouldn't be, but I am. Are we gonna set guidelines as to what should be approved, what shouldn't be approved?
Why do you think?
I, I just, I think we need to do that, because who knows what? And, and you know what's gonna happen. People are gonna say, well, you, you allowed it for this, why aren't you allowing it for mine?
Right, and a good example of that would be, we would not permit any open containers at the park.
But people are gonna say, why not?
Well, that, I mean.
I mean, I'm, you know, I'm, just playing the devil's advocate here, but people are, they're gonna say, well, why not?
No, I understand what you're saying. But what I'm saying is, like, setting those parameters, like you're saying, it also lets people know, well, they're not gonna let it happen there anymore, so, I mean, there's a lot of personal.
But I think we, we need to set parameters before we, you know, continue.
Yes, and I think that's, you know, we can do that, table it. So we have a motion and a second table, any other discussion? I, you know, I respect, uh, your, your position on this. I grew up in an environment where alcohol was not in my house. And the main reason was because of alcoholism in my mother's family, caused them during depression to lose a farm. Which caused them to have tremendous problems. And, uh, now, so, no smoking is also part of the deal. And I've never smoked. And I didn't, I didn't drink alcohol until I got to college, but not at college. I went to Europe, and in Europe, it's a little different. Uh, you can nurse a beer in a pub and never worry about intoxication, but, the real point, the danger, of course, is that public intoxication, which is inevitable. So I respect your position, and, and, and I really, really hope you continue to be our conscience on this matter, because it is important that we do it right. If you don't keep doing it right. Any other, any other discussion? Okay, motion to table ordinance number 58. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. All right, uh, item number C, discuss possible adoption of proposed Resolution 2021-08. Marcus, this is the, uh, resolution that deals with one of the more amazing federal programs of giving money to municipalities without telling them what's suspended on it. But in time, we've got a little bit of.
Well, Mayor, I think it's just me and you.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I don't know if they, can they hear us, I hope.
I have no idea. No, it, it's.
We, we've been through this a dozen times, this discussion. And, um, you know, this past Friday night, I didn't see any sinister-looking rabble-rousers in the crowd. And this next one, we're probably going to have the same people.
Most likely. A few more, because of the wine wagon, the wine cart, so.
Yeah, but, um.
In any event that I've ever been at, that they've had alcohol, you could not take it off the premises, you had to keep it there, you, um, it was just the common sense kind of thing that you already knew, because you already have attended events like these before, or you just kind of go, okay, well, we're not allowed any other time, why would we be allowed now?
Yeah, and, um, you know, uh, six-foot-four Officer Gutschall was going to be mingling through the crowd. Gee, and, and you know what I said? Once Mr. Yaki opens up his microbrew, uh, which he plans for September, uh, it's here to stay. It, it, it's like, um, if we're going to try this, you know, have a test event, this is about as low-key as you can get, this, uh, you know, July concert thing.
We might be, I'm not sure if we're recording or not. So I have no idea.
We're still live on YouTube, but, uh, what was sort of, the entire council voted for this. The entire, six to nothing. And then when it becomes a reality, then.
Whenever they were, oh, there we are.
Okay. Yeah, Alexis and I had to have our own little discussion.
All right, uh, my, my computer gave me about 30 seconds before the battery died. And I'm not that bad. Okay, so the sidewalk program on Workins, $3,500 would be made available to residents. It would be zero interest, and you'd have five years to repay that money. As it's repaid, it would be loaned out for other sidewalk and curb improvements. The last item, and I'd ask you all to think about this a little bit. By last month's regulations, we were going to grant $15,494 to the Petrification Society for new Christmas holiday decorations. Because recreation monies, recreation projects can now be funded, I think we should ask the administration committee to take a look at that, maybe for the press box and some other drainage problems that we've had down the park. But for tonight, I would ask you to get the resolution in place. Uh, the resolution requires us to open a separate checking account for funds. And I think the resolution is important in that it does give a framework that puts in writing and makes transparent how you're going to spend the funds. That's all that I have to let you have to question. Any questions? So we're looking for action on, uh, approving Resolution 2021-08. Approving the appropriation for the American Rescue Action Plan funding. And again, this doesn't detail necessarily what's going where. It's, it's basically setting up checking accounts, and then, um, it will eventually, there will be, there will be motions that will pass in order to identify what we'd use the money for, so that it's transparent. I don't know if this gives the administration the authority to just go ahead with these projects. They will come back to you and follow such a completely. See, Fred, from. The move is, is in second, okay, now the session?
Fred, uh, somewhere in here where it discusses the, uh, micro-business grants.
Yes.
Where's that allocation coming from?
That money will come about from the $60,000 that will be refunded to the borough from lost revenue. The micro-business grants were at the first stage of this, not eligible. I'm not sure that they would be eligible for a rapid fund. But, because you're taking and giving your general fund $60,000 to reimburse lost revenue, that gives you a lot of latitude in how you can spend it. So from that pocket of money, I would say the $10,000 could be granted to small business loans. And I, I would go one step further. If any of you have an opportunity to go out to Mechanicsburg, drive Main Street to Mechanicsburg, and just take a look at what they've done with the sod grant money. And it's all just paint, awnings, window dressing. Their Main Street looks very nice. I mean, there are, you, you, there are highlets all up and down Main Street that are painting now, and storefronts look really nice.
So, loans, I think, and grants.
But they're doing up there, they're doing facade loans and some grants in Mechanicsburg. Our program is a grant, is an outright grant. It would be $2,500 to the startup business. And I would say that preference should be given to those businesses who might be applying for facade grant money from the Redevelopment Authority. And I say that especially after seeing what happened up in Mechanicsburg.
That would not necessarily all be new businesses, though.
It'd be any business. Existing or it would be an existing business. Could be a startup, new business. But I think really, you should prioritize, if they're going after facade grant money, they're going to need to match it. There's an opportunity to match it. And with a facade grant, you might end up, you know, between this money from the borough and the county money, you might end up with over $15,000 for a huge short bond. I think that's what we're looking to do. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, the motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving, uh, Resolution 2021-08, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Any extensions? Motion carries. Anything else? Couple, two other things. We had an attempt made in the ordinance 2021-03, that was attempting to, um, provide additional penalties, simple penalties for violations of large trucks in the borough. We now have a new borough truck restriction study on our various streets. And what I'd like to do is read that study and incorporate some ideas in certainly the areas that are restricted into an ordinance, and then we can look at that again. You've looked at it a little bit. I'd like to submit one from you on what you think might be helpful to, to. I want to make something that's, that provides some revenue for the borough, but also is effective in deterring the trucks holding up on the wrong streets, et cetera. So, I, I guess I'm, I'm asking that we continue to table this at least for another week. He's gonna be at, he's at the work session? Yes, Tim, Tim will be here to. Good, good. We can further discuss it. I think it's a better idea as on how to incorporate it. And finally, and last but not least, um, I've had the opportunity to speak on several occasions with Carl Bird, and he indicates that tomorrow, tomorrow we'll have both the subdivision and land development plan. And he's going to distribute that to the county, to us, to me personally, to, um, our, uh, our contractor who's working on the actual plans for building itself. So it's going out to everybody in the borough. So, he gave me a deadline of by noon tomorrow. These things are scheduled to happen. And he's very apologizing about being overworked and, but the point is that maybe he's close to getting to us, so we'll see. That's all I have to say. Any other questions for this night? Fred, do you mind if we let Alexis go right now? No, let's, she probably is twiddling her thumbs right now.
Well, we're getting a little excitement about 10:00.
I just, um, have had many calls about the feral cats in Newville. And I know you cannot walk down any street without seeing one run across, or seeing one on a porch or somewhere. So, um, I contacted a woman, Christina, about, that she's from the Saving Acres Farm Cat Rescue. And she has her own traps and everything, and she would trap, neuter. And she would trap, neuter, or spay the cat and then release it back. And for each cat, it only costs twenty dollars for her to do all that. And she does it in the evening after work and she's pretty quick about the turnaround. Um, and in Jul-, uh, the July and August, she's got a lot of openings at the York SPCA. And I'm just asking for the borough to, um, put some money towards us trapping some cats and getting the feral cat population down. Cause once we get the populate, well, once we spay and neutered a whole bu-, neuter a whole bunch of them, then they, um, the bad behaviors will stop. They will stop, um, spraying on everybody's furniture, grills, patios. You smell it when you walk down, um, the alleys. You can just smell the cat urine. Um, and then they will stop, um, going in other people's yards and digging up and doing all of the mating behaviors and hearing them yell and fight in the middle of the night. That should decrease. And then once a good bit of the population is spayed or neutered, you won't, the population will go down, but also they will not allow other male cats that are not neutered to come into the area where their colony is. They protect their colony and then, um, then you'll just see a decrease over a few years. You'll just, there will, won't be very many and we can all live together. So I know Diane, she has a problem behind her house with some and.
Yes.
Yeah, we had many discussions about it, so.
The big one had six kids. This year she has four kids. We brought a pack of, um, she's very doctor.
Well, I wanted to thank you first of all for your background work on this. And, uh, we do have a new, new business item to approve, um, up to five hundred dollars. So that's twenty-five cats.
That's awesome.
So, and then, you know, we'll see how it goes. And, you know, if we need to renew, we can, we can certainly bring that up again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
My other question.
Go ahead.
When you were saying about, you know, it should slow down as far as, you know, because they protect their territory, so they're going to be brought back to Newville?
Yes, they're released back into their colony. But she said that York P SPCA, whenever they spay or neuter them right afterwards or before, when they see their behavior and their temperament. And if they're very, um, mild and they are able to be adopted away, they will try and to adopt them away. But other than that, they just release them back into the colony where they already were. There's nowhere else to take them. So they just release them back in to their, their home. Or whoever feeds them, you know, that's where they'll go back to. But once they are spayed and neutered, they, they don't travel as much. They'll stay more into their area, into the home that feeds them.
Well, maybe they'll come back and they'll start talking to their friends and they'll say, straighten up or else you're going to lose body parts.
I, I had some experience with feral cats. Believe it or not, up in Kowachia, we had a herd of fifty cats that were ravishing the cabins. And they were the mandiest, ugliest looking things. And we knew that some of them had to be rabid. Finally, they, they trapped enough of them to eliminate college that way. And believe it or not, on Walnut Bottom, there was a feral cat, feral cat population down there that was, again, being fed by people. And in their day school, a little girl was bit by a cat and the cat was rabid. And so the girl had to go through shots. And so when I went to the supervisors, we had a supervisor who said in front of the public, we got to find the cats and kill the cats. And that made the Sentinel, which went around the world. And we were getting requests for adopting these feral cats from England. And we had a, we had a, I think we had to use the fire hall, but whatever. We had a lot of people showing up because they did not want cats killed that way. And the solution came to be exactly what she's talking about. They came in, trapped the cats, um, and neutered them. And the population vanished rapidly because cats, um, feral cats often die of auto, being run over by autos or other things that way. And so they just can't repopulate the way.
So they, the, um, at York SPCA does give them their rabies shots also and will look over them. And if anything seems like if they have any kind of disease or something that they couldn't be released back, then they either will, um, put the cat down or do something, but they won't release it back while it has something that it could, it's contagious.
They also came up with a program on Walnut Bottom where you take your cat in and get it, um, get their shots and so on. So there was rabies in your domestic cat. So that was helpful too. I think this is a great thing you did.
Thank you. Well, just thank the people on East Main Street who really came at me hard about it. No, I came to you.
All right, any other questions for Alexis? All right, again, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else on your end?
What was that?
Anything else on your end?
Nope, that was all I had.
Very good, keep up the good work.
All right, thank you, guys. Good night.
All right, Mr. Bonsor. The, uh, application through pressing for the DDP yard waste equipment, I have proposals backed now from Stevenson Equipment. And the two items, which include the leaf back and the tree chipper, total two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Ninety percent of the grant will be funded by DDP, which means the borough's mass will be twenty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. You will have appropriated ten thousand this year from the general fund for the leaf truck. And twelve thousand nine hundred would come out of the Highway Aid Fund for the leaf chipper. And so that application is just about ready to wrap up and be submitted. The estimate for the design, and I should point out, you're replacing equipment. Uh, the leaf back is a nineteen ninety-five model and the tree chipper is a nineteen ninety-six model. The estimate and design for the splash pad, um, I've been working with General Recreation. And we've got the estimate and the design work done. And the total cost of that will be ninety-five thousand dollars. And we will be applying to block grant funds in August to fund one hundred percent of that project. DPW is wrapping up curb and crosswalk painting and will finish up doing the, uh, parking space markings and healthcare remodel is complete. The employees, I believe, all received their new cars over the weekend. That's all I have. Questions for Fred? Thank you, Fred. Uh, Western Cog, Mr. Crouch.
A lot of road vehicles going around the area. That was the main, the main news from various townships and boroughs. One other, uh, thing that is, uh, of interest to our borough, and it was especially with the, you know, water sewer Penn Township, mentioned that there are, uh, two entities who are requesting rezoning from commercial to industrial for, for new warehouse projects. They have, uh, tabled those, uh, because they are concerned about approving any more development when Penn Dock is not willing to upgrade the intersections, uh, at the ramp and at the, at the interstate. So, so at this, at this point, they are, uh, concerned about approving more development and without any commitment from Penn Dock to upgrading things there. So, um, that, I know new development means more applications for water. And I think Water Zeroth already, already put a cap on.
There's a cap, but they, they did make their request. They, they came in at the last meeting last Monday night and they were approved. So I've not heard that they've been withdrawn.
Well, the, the behind the scenes is that, uh, one developer has land on both sides of the interstate. And in order to go forward, they're going to donate that land for improvements of each of the ramps, which are locally in need of improvement. The other developer is going to have to provide money, substantial money, to help make that possible. So there's a fund that's already been established, but, uh, it's going to have to significantly grow. And, and once you have local, uh, funding by developers, Penn Dock is more interested in then, uh, joining, joining the project. And they now acknowledge these to be done. It's just that if it's all going to be state federal money, they're not interested because they need to put it elsewhere. But if there's local money that's helping to fund the project, they're more amiable. You know, for the ramps are really bad in terms of, um, the ramps that are coming, um, from the doors down, um, they have to get clogged with traffic and leaves out of the eighty one. The ramp going southbound on two thirty-three into uphill spot with very little merge area. And so the trucks are bumbling along at a slow speed. They're good some bad accidents already. And so we haven't even seen the FedEx trucks yet. And those FedEx trucks are going to make that interchange even more problematic. Because there are lots of, uh, smaller trucks than the big trucks supplying FedEx facilities. So that's, that's behind the scenes what's happening. There has to be funding committed from the developers and land committed from the developers to improve those interchange or else it's not going to work out.
What kind of traffic impact though would happen moving? As growth continues?
Well, hopefully we can keep the trucks, tractor trailers out of here. But you're seeing what FedEx trucks excluding the delivery for smaller trucks.
And one other, one other thing that, uh, should, Borough, Borough, uh, mentioned that their, their council is planning to discuss, I guess, at their next meeting, the possibility or probability of excluding glass from their recycling, prioritizing the discussion that we're doing. That's last, last becoming a major problem with recycling, so. And we, I know we've talked previously about considering that ourselves, so. We'll see how the new program moves out.
They're separating less, or we said, their glass. If they exclude it from recycling, it will just go over the garbage. Move it, you know, all that, all that's in, in more glass.
Well, many communities have already done that. There's just no warning. Mike, was there any discussion from Penn Township about them selling a dump truck, a small dump truck?
They sold one.
Oh, they sold it?
They already put it on municipal, I recall. I think that was actually mentioned at last month, uh, last month's meeting. Uh, they, this one, they, they mentioned they had sold, I believe it's, and sold some lawnmowers.
The reason I brought that up, they, they do have a nice dodge, it's about five or six years old. And certainly it would be nice to buy something four miles away where we know it's been maintained. Then on municipal where, you know, and we did have money set aside for a used dump truck issue. But it's sold for talk.
Well, they, uh, they, I think they had put it on municipal. I had heard them mention it before that they were trying to sell it. They said they had, um, put certain measures around this neighboring municipalities at least. Apparently we didn't get one, but, uh, you know, didn't have any interest in it. Put it on municipal and it went very quickly, so.
Any other questions for Michael? All right, public safety, Mr. Varys?
Several things that Mr. Bonsor had mentioned have an impact on safety. These involve improvements in sidewalks, several other operations, and parsonage. So I think we're making a little bit of progress. It's very important we're doing the feral cats as, as a safety issue as well. So I think we're doing a great thing for the borough council and the borough. People that are interested in safety and security are willing to, I think, is commendable. I can't add much to it. I think we should just keep on, keep on trucking. If people are making improvements, all of these are good things. We'd be really in the right direction. I'm delighted to be a part of that. Other councils do, I really like to contribute to saving the, all of it.
No questions for Mr. Varys? EDA, Mr. Varys?
Hey, so while I'm talking, I may pass this around to see if anyone's there. I'm talking about it again. So the EDA, uh, company, you have your patents, the EDA meeting minutes, what is that? And I'll just give some highlights here. The board has asked Chris to focus, uh, activities on, um, finding and acquiring properties for helping to find, uh, find land that could be used on purpose, requiring units, you know, for this new year. And also for the government, uh, and potentially new housing in the borough. So he is working on that now. There are four properties he's looking at and there's a page there of his strategy report that covers those four. And, uh, and one is on one of the main streets, which is the, you know, sort of, uh, on it there. He's, uh, board members have been looking into potential for acquiring, like, building, uh, credit cost, you know, fair market value, they're looking for the house redevelopment. So he's looking for that. He's also talking to, um, folks that have trouble, uh, Washington and, uh, I'm not sure whether, but it's the, uh, it's the, they're around, uh, Washington, yeah. They apparently are interested in helping to property, it'd be a great problem for, um, in the borough. In the market, great housing. So their conversation's been had there, but it's, right now it's pretty expensive. But that's, that's kind of what Chris is pointing to, just, yeah, this is the moment. On the, uh, well, Fred did the sort of, or almost come on a part comment. I'll move back over to that. The PHC meeting this past month, uh, the discussion was on the, uh, Chris discussed the project management report. Also, with a discussion of, uh, on this and, you know, setting up a diagnostic center in town. And, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, location for that, Andrea, who doesn't have the, uh, EDA, protecting, uh, if, uh, simply, this is, this is major for, uh, to talk him about. And, uh, and do something, I hope, for that there. And, uh, so we'll see how that one goes. On the prospect of what's going on in small businesses, uh, we have confirmed that there's a restaurant that's going to be opened, uh, on one two four seven nine High Street. Mr. Yarney, uh, has taken the lease on that property. He's got his, uh, approval, land is covered approval. And he's talking about having this open by, by December. So we'll see. Ambitious, but, um, uh, Mallie, uh, is going to reach out. I mean, she's, she's one of the people we've been talking to. We're going to reach out and determine what needs and they have at this point. Maybe helping with the facade application, some sort of facade application. But I think that's really, I think it's pretty concrete. Sounds like it's, uh, on the tracks. I think I may have recorded last time that there was another judge was interested in, in located in Chippewa facility and a restaurant for a potential micro group. They decided eventually to move on. And the, uh, the micro group had questions about the location. And then Chippewa, he was trying to accelerate the, their ability to substance profit. They've got a hundred and forty-four thousand degrees, a hundred and forty-five. got a hundred and forty-four thousand, three degrees, a hundred and forty-five thousand, and so I think they're working hard for some subwesters. There is a business, a construction business that's operating in town that's, I won't mention the name, it's probably not, it was a accounting, it was a contractor, sorry, Talking to them about opening a lot of businesses operations there, so that the D and D service moving into the area. Let's see what else. On the website, it is pretty, ready to go, I'm there, and I have a call a week ago, where the final edits are made. The only thing that's holding up at this point is waiting to get final approval from the property owners of the properties that are listed as available to list on the site. That's going on right now, and hopefully we've done well in the next meeting. But other than that, we're ready to go. And we got the chart ball is finished, it's gone to print, despite other copies are being made. We're gonna use that to cover a letter to a number of organizations that are really important, and we will have contacts with small businesses like banks, realty offices, county agencies, chambers of commerce. So we're gonna do a mailing of some of this stuff, and then a call, if you work from the bank and focused a little bit more, we're starting to make a call, calls to a lot of these organizations to see if they can get their support. And then the final thing is the central community business journal. It really has article for us a couple of weeks ago, the quarter, something, prospect posting to be able to work on, and what, Val, they finally got her, but be able to make this contact together, okay? She talked to Fred, she talked to Val, she talked to Andrea. I think it's a pretty good article. It shows what we're trying to do. I think it's useful just in terms of small businesses scenes. We're gonna try to get on our website as quickly as we can, include it in any kind of mailing we're doing, but it's just, it's kind of eliciting to really be, it's like a result of the map here, so I think that's a real good contract to establish for us. We'll be really useful to go forward, and, you know, try to get more of the press along. So it's pretty much there.
Okay. I can go to that, it's a long material. Ed's not here for recreation, but I'm sure you've probably already heard, but the town festival is on for October the second, right? Second? October second, one day event. So be sure that the borough offices are interrogating questions about vendors and stuff like that.
In between garbage.
Anything else to add for recreation? Okay. Quality Life, Mr. Deal?
Okay. The Wilshire Warriors is coming along. We have started to get money donations in, which is always a good thing. People have been donating, you know, other items that Kathy has actually put some of it on, like the yard sale site, just to get, you know, some money. It's things like, she got a big container of canned sanitizer, okay? And she got, you know, some baseball hats, things like that, that she's just putting on and, you know, someone invested off or, and they are, people aren't buying them, so that's just kind of to maybe, you know, some income. We did an application for a license, but I don't know if Randy's done any more towards that or not.
I haven't heard a word about, I haven't heard a word about it. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Did you do the letter for saying that the beautification can use their number?
Yeah, I gave you the number, but you also need to send in a copy of our approval from the IRS, but nobody has, nobody's asked me for that.
I did, I sent it to you, and I mean.
No, you sent me an email, Joey, asking for the number. I didn't know that you needed the IRS approval until Fred told me today. Now, I have one other issue. Have you seen the flyers? If we need to be able to prove to the, not only the IRS, but the county treasurer, if you're using our, we've approved the use of our nonprofit EIN number. We need to be listed on the flyer as a sponsor of this event, and we're not. There's nothing on the flyers I've seen about the Beautification Society being a sponsor.
See, I thought.
No, your text message, Joey, concerned the number.
Great, that one is, I thought I sent you an email later, too. So I was, but I thought.
Well, I'm gonna get that, a copy of that approval letter from the IRS tomorrow. It's in my office, and I'll provide a copy to Fred. But again, we have to substantiate, not only to the county treasurer's office, who's gonna issue the small games a chance, but to the IRS that we are a sponsor of this event, and it hasn't appeared on anything yet. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
This not-for-profit organization, how well is it being advertised?
Was that a question for me, Bob? I only heard the last part.
Sort of, in other words, I think this is a good thing. We have a not-for-profit organization now, status with an EIN. How well is it advertised? Would people know about it?
Well, I don't know, at this point, what we would advertise it for. People in town know what we do, take care of the memorial, the bed at the mill, the Pawpax Garden. My thrust here was, we're allowing the use of our number for the wounded warriors. We needed, we need to be listed as a sponsor on their ads.
That's a good thing to do, right? I agree with you.
And it would serve two things, it would get us some publicity, or some good, you know, recognition, but county treasurer's office and the IRS have to have verification that we're doing this.
The other thing that I have to discuss is, at the last, I guess it was the work session, had Scott brought up an email that he had received from a William garden about decriminalization ordinance, and it was passed on to me because on quality of life. Well, I had quicked a conversation with this gentleman on Sunday evening, and I don't think we should go any further with it. He's asking our little community to put in that will affect the fact that medical cannabis and small amounts of marijuana should be okay. And I asked him why it isn't being regulated from the state, and he proceeded to tell me, it's the Republicans. And I told him, I kind of took offense to that, because I was a Republican. And in this email that he sent to Scott, he kind of made it sound like he had something to do with Carlisle's ordinance of them passing it, and in reality, he didn't. He also told me that he was a community leader here in Newville, and I told him I had never heard of him, and that I've been in Newville for a very long time. And he said that he helped to clean and rebuild the town several times. And I asked him, what he did.
Is this that?
Yeah. Well, he proceeded to tell me that he worked for Mr. Darius. No, he did, he mentioned, he told me that he worked for you. He isn't willing to, I asked him, I said, did you, you know, contact, because he does live in the borough. I asked him if he contacted, you know, the area townships to get their feelings on it. And he goes, well, no, because they don't have a police department. And I said, but, no, but they're serviceable, state police, so, you know, maybe they would wanna take a look at that. And he told me he didn't have time. And I said, well, you have time to write this email, I said, you can copy and paste, you know? And I just, I'm sorry, I don't think that that's something that we as borough want to get involved in, whenever, you know, it's, you know, was made law by the state. So, I mean, it's up to you guys, but I personally, and as quality of life, and I am not going to pursue this document. So, that's.
Your credentials seem questionable.
Exactly, exactly. Yes, again. So, I mean, I talked to him for two hours on Sunday night, and there were some times where the.
I admire your endurance.
Well, there was times when it got a little heated, but, yeah, so that's just, that's just my opinion.
I probably didn't say anything to you.
I don't, I don't know, so, but that's, yeah, but that's all I have, is, you know, I'm just going on record, you have the, I'm not gonna pursue this.
Anything else? Any other questions for Mr. Deal? Administration Committee, Mr. Crouch?
Public Works Department is interested in a gravel bucket for the skid loader. I think the main purpose of that is for handling trees and tree limbs, be quite, I think quite loaded off the fella's physically. I've seen those in use, and it's better. They can make small work of a big piece of wood. So I think they, we have a proposal in the packet for the cost of that, and I would make a motion that we approve that purchase.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Could I ask a question? If we could find out at Knowles or Nessus, cheaper and not have the shipping, are we still authorized to buy it?
Yeah, my motion wasn't specific to this video.
Go speak to get a local, have no shipping, this will appear cheaper, that's how it's done?
Well. I mean, yes, take that back.
I followed the mayor's information with about Sarah Miller's interest in the Civil Service Commission, and spoke to her, confirmed her interest in, and found that she'd already gotten information on the role of the Civil Service Commission was, went to the end of that, and she was subsequently interviewed, and they're well qualified to fill the position as no conflicts, and so recommended, and then moved to appoint Sarah Miller to, it's on your agenda as the unexpired term of Susan Salisbury, I will say the unfilled term of Susan Salisbury. That position was never actually filled completely.
So, yeah, I think we might need a little work spent, because we did, we did appoint her, but she never took the other.
Is that correct?
Correct. So maybe it should say, discuss the removal of Sarah Miller, Sarah Miller.
Susan Salisbury.
Susan Salisbury. And appoint Sarah Miller to fulfill the unexpired term. I was, I was just looking to see if we agreed, I didn't think we removed her. So, right now, there's somebody sitting there, so we probably should remove them then.
I would do that. To fill the commission with the act of that.
All right, you have a motion before you, is there a second? The second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Mr. Mayor, will you reach out to her to get her sworn in?
Yes, I have her email address, that's how we communicated before, and probably at the conclusion of this meeting, I'll send her an email, and we'll get that done and get the committee or the commission underway. Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for your effort.
Right. And then we've discussed previously resuming our inspections July third, and I think the consensus was that that's something we should move forward with. Do you have anything to further on that?
Phil, we've all heard tonight that we have a code enforcement officer who is doing very well, and of course, we know from our discussions last summer, this time, we had several meetings over the code enforcement program. I think it's a good idea to resume the program and the inspection. My question is, do we want to, before we go into engaging a company, offer this to our code enforcement officer and let her come back with a proposal if she would like to do no more than four a month of what she would charge? Give her an opportunity for cheap. Now, do you have any input on that?
We have to talk to her about it, because people in the lot aren't late, pretty busy with what she has now.
Should he have a sit-down?
I don't know, I must, you know, I know she's doing well with other programs and the landlord's life and everything I've heard.
It wouldn't hurt to approach her, I think, if she would walk up. I was gonna take a listen, Phil.
I think maybe the little work session we can ask.
Yeah, we can swing down and just do some check it out.
All right. Anything else, Mike? Any questions for Mike? Okay, citizen comment period. Any questions, comments?
I enjoyed tonight, I learned a lot, and you all seemed enthusiastic, that's great. And I'm thankful you served, and I listened to some of your reports, and there's a lot of excellent work, and I appreciate that. And I just wish the community would know more about how some of you are, you know, producing and using your time, as it's.
Correspondents, Fred?
We have a letter from the Cumberland County Planning Commission advising that the land partnerships grant will be reopening. Applications are due to be submitted by Wednesday, September one, 2021, and announcements will be made in November or December. We have a letter from the Cumberland County Planning Commission. Planning Commission has completed its review of our new zoning ordinance. They've made four comments and have recommended approval. The comments have been shared with Troy Truax, Lister Matthew McKnight, and will be addressed at the next Planning Commission meetings on July. and will be addressed at the next Planning Commission meetings on July 14. We have a letter from Scott Penner in his capacity of Dean of Students and Assistant Athletic Director to the Borough Council on behalf of the Big Spring High School class of 2021. I want to thank you for your support of this year's parade. It was a great success. Also, thank you to the police department and organized the closed streets and provided public safety. The Borough's Maintenance Bureau is also instrumental in supporting this year's parade organization. At the time, our students have lost so many activities that makes sense for a positive, engaging experience. Activities like the senior parade have meant so much for our students. Thank you again for your support, Scott Penner. We have a letter from our code enforcement officer, Alexis. Again, she's advocating contracting with the Saving Acres Farm Cat Rescue, Christine Lotwick, who would be helping us with spay neutering at a cost of $20 per animal. And we have a letter of request from Bradley Stafford, Borough Fire Chief, requesting permission to provide traffic control at Alliance Club Fair from July 7th through 10th. And we need to have this recorded in our minutes. And also, we need to make notice to the township of North Newton that the fire company will be providing. So, we need a motion to approve the fire police to provide service to New Alliance Club Fair.
The move then seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. That's all, correspondents. Thank you, Fred.
Old business review and discuss awarding a bid of Mort Corporation Street, C D B G project. Unfortunately, we're not in the position to act yet tonight. The county redevelopment authority is looking to merge our funding from Parson and Street with Mort Corporation. Just take some time and ask it goes to PUD. County commissioners have to have a public hearing. And so hopefully they're working through that process. But we have notified the enterprise, Jim Walder, and told him that we will hopefully make a new work here.
All right. So, any other old business?
Okay, under new business, we have 10 items. The first one is a motion to approve accepting a bid from Capoeira Paving for paving projects in the borough in the amount of $13,897 to be paid from Highway 8.
It's been moved, it's a second. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Item number two, motion to approve the removal of all on-street parking meter poles and to purchase live receptacles in the amount of $875 to be paid for from the general fund. We have a motion.
A move?
A move, did we have a second?
And then the flag pole, the flag over the.
Okay, so the receptacle actually gets bored down into the curb or the, it can use the existing. We could, you can do that, but part of the problem is when you have the car doors here. So, if we put a pole there. So, we can put them wherever we want. I think this gets us 35 receptacles so they can, you know, line the streets wherever they want to. And, you know, when the flags aren't in, there's no obstruction. The car is just a small hole.
Correct.
Yep. It's flush with the ground, it should not be a trouble.
Fantastic.
Yes.
So, we have a motion, it's a second.
Second. Second already happened.
It's been seconded. Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Item number three, motion to approve the Borough Manager to complete grant applications for the Cumberland County Land Partnership Grant and the Penn Dot Transportation Set Aside Grant. The move is seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Item number four, motion to approve repairs to one police vehicle to replace or repair lights and to repair the torsion rods paid for from the general fund. It's been moved, we have a second. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Item number five, motion to see to quote to repair the borough's salt bin. It's been moved, it's a second. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussions?
The walls on all three sides are treated material, fresh retreating lumber. The west side wall is kicking out at the base. And we would like to investigate either using pre-fab block from New Enterprise or corded place walls that would be concrete and sealed. And we would like to use the canopy, lift it off and then reset it.
Just looking for it.
So, it's moved, moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Item number six, motion to pay the remaining funds for the banners throughout town in the amount of about $200 from the general fund. This would be used to cover what is not, what's not remaining in the joint veteran council. It's about $200, which is needed.
Over.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Any extensions? Getting weak, motion carries. Number seven, motion to not renew the indaco contract when it ends, ends this August. Each Public Works employee will be provided with an annual $450 clothing allowance. The motion. It's been moved, it's a second. Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Item number eight.
That is something the works employee.
Yeah, they don't like the shirts, the shorts. These shirts were rough and they sweat. They didn't care for that. And they can buy the T-shirts. Everybody likes the T-shirts. And then just stay with them for pants and shorts. The guy said, just go back. Now, the plant operators, they do like it and they want to stay.
Item number eight, motion to approve the proposed trap neuter release program through Saving Acres Farm for feral cats, not to exceed $500 from the general fund.
Let us know. I'm the one that's going to get my ear burned off on the telephone. What are we going to do when we catch fluffy? That was smuffed outside by labor and then gets taken off and gets neutered and dumped back in the yard. It's got a notch in its ear and missing body parts.
I think she said that they would advertise prior for people to keep their cats indoors during the trapping.
Make sure that we're making contact with every door, with door hanger or something. That there's going to be trapping in that vicinity over this time period. Which I'm afraid that's going to lead people to mess with the traps that don't want the cats caught. But is there, do we believe that many of the feral cats are opposite feral cats or not something? Do we believe that there's an X running around town or? One of our neighbors has hundreds of cats running around town. And I've gotten tons of complaints from Big Spring Avenue where an individual was trapping them and removing them. And occasionally he catches one that somebody was letting in and out every day and it disappeared. And like I said, I got my ear burned off several times about that. And I can see that happen.
Yeah, I'll be alternative, a little bit run wild.
And I would think too that they, I mean, you can have your cat tattooed. And I would think that they would, you know, check that and see if, and then they can check the records. And I think it's going to call her on it. They're not going to break, do anything with it.
And you said about them messing with traps. I know Sherry, the mail lady, she put them down by our house because cats lived underneath the neighbor's door. And, you know, nobody messed with those traps. But I think it's because they don't know where the traps are.
Right. And now, if we do it this way, we're going to alert people that traffic's going on. So, I'm just saying that's a possibility.
Back when something was in the throes of there of level down cats, feral cats, it has an ordinance that said if you feed the cats, you are required to take possession of it, get it shot.
Get it shot. Backseat. Here we go. We go around the world now.
That's right, that's right.
I was just trying to say already, if you're feeding it, you have to. Oh, really? Yes. Is there a ordinance?
Can you, can you send me that ordinance? I'll, I'll.
Send the dog ordinance.
I'll put some on social media too. But, and the other thing is, you know, if this passes and somebody's hiding, they shouldn't be hiding it. Tell them to come to council.
They shouldn't be.
Tell them to come to council.
I've got screamed at every trash can today. Police Department has nothing to do with that either.
Tell them to come to council.
All right. I can't remember, was it moved and seconded?
Yeah.
So, we need a motion and a second.
Motion.
The move is a second. It's been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Item number nine, motion to close streets around the fountain for August 3rd beginning at 4:00 PM for national layout.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. And the last one, motion, this comes a request of the Recreation Committee. Motion to appoint Natasha Kemsner, Kemsner, is that right? As Recreation Committee Assistant at a rate of $12 an hour for more than 10 hours per week. This is to help at the park for their weekly activities.
Second.
It's been moved, it's a second. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Any extensions? Motion carries.
Background check. Yes.
Anything else?
Scott, I have one thing. And it goes back to the request from the department regarding the park. You approved purchasing a new control park. We approved a loan from Vin Penn Bank at a very favorable rate. And the chief has tried on at least two occasions that I'm aware, to get a VIN number so we could close on the loan. And we still are no close closer today than we were three months ago. Chief has tried, the bank is waiting to give us money and pay for our car. And we continue to incur. So, I don't know, I was down last week helping John Epley with his ARPA grant. And they just took a delivery of a new unmarked Ford. I said, John, how did you get this car so quick? He said, we ordered it three months ago. I said, we've been waiting that long just to get a confirmation. He said, well, the chief orders them from a dealer. He didn't say, John didn't know where he said, but we buy our cars from the same company.
Here tomorrow.
So, if we.
Yeah, we don't even, the plant, Ford plant allegedly is closed right now. And they're not even assigning VIN number for orders yet because they're not, not making anything. They can't get computer parts sent.
So, if the chief could find a Ford vehicle somewhere else and we could come back to council and ask council to buy that vehicle, we could still send it to 911 to have all the uplifting done. But we've gone three months now without even the ability to say we have a car on the way.
Does it work out? Because it's wired for you. So, we're to call them wired tomorrow and say it'll be done until next Tuesday if you give us a VIN number. Otherwise, I will elsewhere.
I will call and check again. I just know the first two times I called, I got. Yeah, I did. I got lip service and I was bugging them and they let me know whenever the VIN was assigned. But it's been at the park at least a month.
They almost six weeks.
The time we ordered this, this was April.
Because, you know, what's going to happen? Those rates are going to go up. It's going to. All right. We can, you know, put it on your anything next Tuesday, we can move on.
We're glad to. We're happy.
Doesn't that have to be four?
Soft talk, chief.
Unmarked.
Unmarked, right.
All right. Anything else? Okay, very good. Waiting on you. The move is a second. All those in favor say aye. Anybody opposed?
Very easy.
All right. See you next week.
Fred, do you need your ordinance?
For this, for you.
Is that the emergency? I resolved that by resident.